It is now seven PM. Welcome to the Monday, June 2nd, 2025 Town Council Meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting, and if we could please silence electronic devices while in the Cook-Wilkinson Community Government Room. I would like to ask our Town Secretary Lynn Jones to please call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Willen?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich?
Here.
Mr. Gortney?
Here.
Dr. K?
Here.
Ms. Robertson?
Here.
Thank you. Councilperson, excuse me, Councilperson Favaro will now lead us in an invocation.
Dear Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful for this day that we get to join together and discuss the needs of our town. Please help us to counsel well and to take into consideration the needs of all the citizens in this town of Double Oak. Please help protect our first responders, especially our police department and our fire department as well, and please help protect our citizens. We're so very grateful that we get to gather here and be in a free country and say things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich will now lead us in the pledges. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Moving on to with our meeting tonight, item two, citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. We did not have anyone sign up for that, so we are going to move on from that item. So we'll move on to item three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which the event the item will be removed from consent agenda considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. Counsel, this evening we have two items. We have number five, discuss, consider, and act on the minutes of May 19th, 2025. And then we have a discuss, consider, and act on a new dishwasher for the Double Oak Town Hall. So we're gonna go ahead and take those separately, but we'll combine the vote together unless we need to separate them into separate agenda items. So first thing, counsel, are there any corrections to the minutes of May 19th, 2025?
No.
Okay. And as far as the new dishwasher for the Double Oak Town Hall, as we know that we do a lot of events here, and unfortunately, the dishwasher that was purchased in nineteen, what? Seventy? I don't know. It was, it's, it's very old. It is now since seen its last day. It's not cleaning the dishes correctly and all that. And we are looking at, I think it's just right around $500, correct, Chris?
That's not the duties of the town administrator? I sure thought that was in his job description.
Oh, to do the dishes?
Yes.
Well, we-
I called his wife and she said he does the dishes at home. Why can't he do the dishes here?
So, so any questions on the fact that we need a new dishwasher? And like I said, we, when we go to spend the town's money, even if it's underneath our spending limits, we still bring it to the, to the town. So if that is the case, counsel, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilperson Gortney and a second by Councilperson Robertson. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to item four, mayor council members and staff reports. So I'm gonna go ahead and just start all the way over with Councilperson Robertson and see if she's got anything she would like to report out on.
Nothing for me today.
Okay. Dr. K?
I was asked by a citizen what time exactly the Fourth of July parade will be going on?
We will have all that in the Friday update.
Oh, so you don't know?
Typically, it's around nine thirty-ish.
Nine and nine thirty, but I'll get, I'll get with the fire department and we'll get, yeah, it's, it's time. I wanna start, we're what, three weeks? Four weeks out? Yeah, we'll start. That'll become a regular part of the Friday update. So we'll get all that information.
But sometime between nine and nine thirty, probably. Okay.
Yeah, the lineup's usually, well, the lineup kind of starts when it starts.
It just about starts at sunrise?
Sometimes, yeah, it does. So, and you'll have your car out?
Possibly.
Okay. Mike?
No.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem?
Chris, myself, and another, the web person, we had a good meeting with that. I'm sure Chris is gonna talk more about that later. But we had a good meeting about that. That was really interesting and pretty impressive what the guy was gonna do, but I'm sure that we're gonna have more on that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I was just going to ask also about the Fourth of July. Does the council want to have a float the Fourth of July again, since we need to talk about that in public?
Yes.
Yes. Mark, can you get us the flatbed again?
I'm gonna see if it has an air conditioner this year.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
I'll be out of town.
I have to be out of town, too.
Can I be out of town?
We may not need a float float, then it was just gonna be the three of us. Or four of us.
A three-seat golf cart.
There we are.
Perfect.
Yeah, who's got one?
So, yeah, we'll, I'll get with, actually, I'll get with Fire Department and we'll, I'll get all the particulars they have, and we'll get in on the Friday update. So it is that time of year. All right, which kind of bleeds into a few things I was gonna have. Obviously, it's summer reminders. People are gonna be gone. If you know your neighbors are gone, keep an eye on their stuff. Obviously, if you're gonna be gone, citizens, you know, you can call up your, right, chief, and let people know if someone's gonna be gone for an extended period of time and the upstairs watch. Yeah, they can submit a vacation house watch online, or we have the paper forms in the lobby as well. A big ask is that we've had some decent rains. It looks like we're gonna have a little bit more this, this week. And with rain brings tall grass and weeds, so if we can do our parts as citizens and keep our yards tended to, and this way, we don't have to have our public works folks chasing you down with letters and such. And then I did notice that we've got some, some dead trees in the, in the town. Trees that are on personal property are the responsibility of the citizens, and they are a health hazard as it relates to if someone be walking by and the tree would be near the street, it could fall down upon someone. I actually had that same scenario with my tree, and it half died, and I thought, well, I'll keep it, 'cause maybe it'll come back. And I didn't wanna take a chance with the people walking down the street that a branch would fall out and hit them or in a windstorm. So if we can tend to those things.
Are you asking the homeowners, homeowners association that owns the trees on Tanglewood? There's three dead ones there.
We, we were just talking about that.
Okay.
Tanglewood, and then we've also got some dead trees in the median on Cedar Crest that have gotta get addressed. Now, I think this, that's a different, I think Cedar Crest, everybody owns up to the middle of the street and all that, so, so yes. And then the last thing is, I attended the Eden Ranch meeting the other night. And I was, they, they allowed me to speak. I spoke on behalf of Double Oak in regards to concerns about drainage, as well as an intersection that exits out of Eden Ranch onto King's Road. The developer contacted me back on Sunday, and so I'm gonna try and meet him for lunch sometime this week. And just so he can kinda hear us out the full way, I did speak before the meeting to the gentleman who does all the layout, the designer. And so I don't know if anything will come of that, because it's not our project, but we're sure gonna do our best to see if maybe if they could adjust that exit down to plantation and it not go on to, to Kings. The people that come out of there may decide that 1171 might be quicker and they'll jot down there versus coming back up to King's Road. But I don't know. And then I'm meeting with Half and Associates sometime this week to discuss the intersection at King's Road with Eden Ranch. So it's kind of coupled together, you know, as far as what Eden Ranch is gonna do with their development, that's, that's a wonderful thing. But we have an intersection there where basically Double Oak has 300 feet of road that we're responsible for, and we've gotta make sure that we do the right thing. So I'll have more of a report out on the next council meeting, on those two, two meetings. Okay? All right, Public Works Code Enforcement.
Just a couple of updates. The street projects are all basically officially done. We have yet to pay the retainage fee because we still need to do a walkthrough, so we're getting that scheduled so that the walkthrough will be with the mayor and I, Half, and the contractor, just to make sure that everything's buttoned up before they get their final retainage fee. But that project is finally wrapping up after numerous delays, so I'm glad that one is, is over with. Also, I did meet with Marshall. We're moving forward on a lot of the crack seal stuff. I am getting bids. I have noticed in the past, we've always gone with the same company, and I haven't seen a lot of getting multiple bids for that, that contract. So I'm reaching out to some of what some of the other local cities are using, just 'cause I wanna make sure that we're getting a fair price instead of just going with whoever we have used in the past. So that'll be happening real soon, and hopefully I can get that before you guys in the next, either the next meeting or the one after that, but get that done ASAP. So that's all I have for that.
Okay, thank you. Administration?
We have started the recruitment for the treasurer position, and we will probably be doing some interviews later this week. We've already got a few applications, so that's, that's very, very good. Also, one thing I'm doing is I'm taking a lot of time reviewing some of our existing IT contracts. I'm finding that some of them are either duplicates or questioning, do we really need to do some of this stuff or not? So I'm just taking a good, close look at that to make sure we're not doing, we don't have contracts that we really don't need. But also making sure that we're staying within the law and we're doing everything legally that we are required to do from an IT perspective. So just again, trying to focus on efficiencies and making sure our dollars are spent wisely.
Lynn, you have anything? Okay. Public Safety, Chief?
The two recruits are both doing well in field training. We don't expect any delays with that. We're still working to fill that last open patrol position. I have one resume on my desk. I'll probably reach out to him this week with some questions, but fingers crossed, hopefully he's a viable candidate.
Okay, thank you. Roads Committee?
Well, it looks like Chris kinda handled that, but did you ever find out anything about right here? Like between Bridlewood, like what can we do? 'Cause I know Mark's mentioned if we got Flowermount involved, they can, they have like some better materials and, and things that they could fix.
You're talking about the pothole right there at the corner on the right side?
The problem is that there's a big water pond right next to it, and so every time we go try to fill it up, it's, it's so wet, it doesn't seal correctly. We try to get the water out, but, and then of course, this week is not helping 'cause it's supposed to rate again, but that's, that's the concern. But yeah, maybe we can reach out to Flowermount and see if they got something that can help us with that.
Yeah, 'cause they have like better tools to use, right?
Yeah, they have one of those machines that spray tar and rocks at the same time. It's actually, you can see it through the town, well, cracks and stuff. Sometimes their, their first year, they kind of were overabundant on, they're expecting it to settle and it doesn't, so there's some places that they, first year they were playing with it, they had issues, but afterwards, they started doing real good. But yeah, like you're saying, if it's wet, nothing's gonna stick.
Yeah, so I'll be happy to reach out to Flowermount and take an option at that, but we just, we need some, two or three days of really good sunshine, so.
Yeah, just needed to be dry for a week.
Okay, anything else? Drainage Committee?
Nothing.
All right. Moving on to new business, first and foremost, before I introduce item 13, Dave, thank you for being here. If you're, I think everybody's aware in this room, but for those watching on YouTube, Dave Nelson has been representing the Upper Trinity for Double Oak for how many years now? Fourth year. And he did an amazing presentation a couple meetings ago, and we're, we're gonna have him come back and do another update sometime in, in the fall. And so what we're doing today on item 13 is discuss, consider, and act on approving the Resolution 25-01, appointing Dave Nelson as the Town's Representative on the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. Chris?
Although, it's pretty self-explanatory, so it's just a-
It's, it's procedural.
It's another four-year term, and it's, his term expires right away, so we're getting it, getting it to you guys.
And we really appreciate, Dave, you being there for us. You do an outstanding job on it. It is crazy, especially we saw the legislature did, did, did they not pass, I think it was getting close to getting passed or not? Okay, I, they were close. I agree. Yep. So with that said, counsel, is there any further discussion on the resolution? All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2501, appointing Dave Nelson as the Town's Representative to the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Willen and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Dr. K?
Aye.
All right, thank you, counsel, and Dave, thank you again. You're doing an awesome job, and we appreciate you very much.
And, and Dave, I have to say that's a very appropriate shirt.
All right, item 14, discuss, consider, and act on amending Section 5.2 Vacation Leave in the Town of Double Oak Personnel Manual. Presentation by Chris Loganhour, and I believe that the chief's also gonna speak on behalf of this, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, too.
No problem. Yeah, one of the things that Chief and I have been working very closely on is basically retention, recruitment and retention of employees here, and one of the big things that was glaringly obvious to us is the amount of vacation that we offer our new employees. Right now, our new employees from year zero through two, we are only giving one week of vacation. When we surveyed the surrounding cities, and from my experience in local government, I mean, it's pretty standard that everyone starts at two weeks. So when we're competing against the, the local municipalities, vacation is a big thing, and it's, so what I did, I mean, just, one of the things we'll be looking at is looking at the entire handbook, but I wanted to bring this one specifically because, again, it meets a, it meets a dire need from a recruitment and retention perspective. And I'd like the chief to talk a little bit about that as it relates to the sworn officers and things of that sort.
Yeah, so, so as y'all know, the sworn officers work 12-hour shifts. So when we say a week of vacation, we're talking about 40 hours. But on 12-hour shifts, 40 hours is three and a third shifts. So basically, your first two years at Double Oak, you get three and a third days off per year for vacation. That's, that, that, it's, that, that's very damaging to, to recruitment. So all we're looking for is, is to be competitive with the surrounding cities. And really, it's not that big a deal. We only have, I think, two or three employees for whom this would, this would make an effect, because from two through five years, we're the same as all the other cities around us. It's just that zero to two years section that causes an issue.
What does this do to our part-time people? 'Cause don't we have a couple of part-time personnel?
Yeah, currently, the way that the policy reads is both our full-time and our part-time are incorporated into providing the vacation time.
And who's our part-time people?
We have one crossing guard.
Okay. Is the treasurer gonna be part-time, too?
He'll be a full-time position.
That'll be a full-time position, okay. So as a part-time person, they're getting a, they're gonna get two weeks vacation?
That is the, well, I'm basing it on how it is written right now. We are recommending going from, if we, if we just, if we do what we're recommending, if we go from one week to two week for both full-time and part-time.
So.
And this is only for those that are zero to two years of service, so she's already over that, our crossing guard? Is, a crossing guard is not? I thought she'd been with us for over two years now.
I looked, she's been here a little over a year.
Oh, okay, I thought she'd been here longer.
But I would comment, though, that based upon my experience, typically, part-time employees do not get the full benefits as a full-time employee. When I looked at other jurisdictions, either they got zero vacation sick leave or they got like a half of what the employees got or something like that. Very rarely, at least in my 30-year career, have I seen part-time employees get the same amount as a full-time employee, especially for vacation.
Correct.
So, I mean, I, I did, that wasn't my report, but I just wanna bring that up. So if, as a council, you wanna make that policy decision as it relates to part-timers, that's fine.
So from my standpoint, in private business, when I was in that, not, I'm self-employed now, so it doesn't matter, but part-timers didn't get any vacation. So I guess I'm just trying to figure out why we're giving a part-time person vacation, and they're not even working, I mean, I mean, she's working, but she's working nine months also, and then off for three, I guess. But it's not just about her, it's about any other part-time person we hire in the future. What are we gonna be looking at doing? I just, for me, I, just to come to the point, I think we should have no, I think it should be zero.
My comment on that is yes, and typically, the, the cost to the city for, for vacation time, I mean, the true cost to the budget isn't them taking a day off. It's when they retire from the city, we are required to cash out all earned vacation. So that's why those cities either choose not to do it for part-timers, because typically, there's more turnover with your part-time staff, or do a smaller percentage of, of time, not, not the full amount that full-timers get, 'cause otherwise, your payouts are gonna be a lot more.
Well, it also doesn't make sense. She doesn't work 40 hours, so that's more than two weeks if she got the full 80. That'd be four weeks, or I don't know what her hours are, but if she was, yeah, depending on that.
So can we amend this in that second paragraph to say our current vacation allows, let me see, where is it? Where it would just say for full-time employees, that this would only relate to full-time employees? Trying to find the paragraph. Yes.
Yeah, so where we would, the recommended action to read vacation leave to increase earned vacation for full-time employees with zero to two years of service. I think you're recommending it to go to 80 hours per year. In the notes, it says 40, but 80 hours per year.
And just do full-time?
Full-time.
But do we, but do we have to say part-time is getting nothing, or that's just understood? Is that just understood, or do we have to?
That's about because right now, it's, it states in the employee handbook that they do get one week of vacation with the same vacation rules that the full-time.
So we'd have to make an amendment to that part of their- Is that two different votes, or is that?
Be two different.
Okay. Which one do we gotta do first? Does it matter?
I think that the, you know, the, the part-time could, should get some vacation in there, especially if they work. You know, it depends on how much they work. I don't know if there's a way to, to balance it, because the way that I've seen in the past with the way I work, every paycheck, you get so many hours, but I don't know if you can base that on, you know, you're, you're full-time, so that's what you get up here. If you're like a 50%, you get half of that. you're like a fifty percent, you get half of that. And so, you know, if you're only working twenty-five percent, you know, as a part-time, very low, then, well, you get twenty-five percent of whatever that is.
Should we maybe, should we maybe recommend a, an evaluation on the part-time as a follow-up action, and then go ahead and vote on the full-time employees?
Yeah, I'd like that.
I think that'd just be-
Yeah, we can bring it back.
Yeah, and do some research on how it works? Okay.
Perfect.
You have this action just be for the full-time.
Yeah, this, this vote just be for the full-time vacation leave to eighty hours, and an action, a follow-up action item to evaluate, do our due diligence on what a recommended part-time vacation and sick leave policy, because I don't want to mix up vacation and sick leave, because you don't want, if somebody's ill or-
And that's what I was thinking, too. This only affects vacation.
Correct.
They have sick leave also, part-time.
Yes.
And so that's the other part of the equation in this.
So I'll come back with a separate recommendation.
I think I'm okay with, I mean, I would be okay with sick leave, I just vacation.
No, that's what, I think we need to look at it all and say-
Yeah, yeah, and, and I guess, and I know you will, Chris, but just other towns do, what are they doing, what's-
I'll get you that report on what other towns do for their part-time employees.
Yeah. You're not going to hire part-times, right, chief? Yeah, you're just, you barely hire full-time.
Just recent, I looked at Argyle's real quick, because I was checking out their website through the next item, and they do pay their part-timer, it's like half-time, it's like fifty percent of what full-timers get. Other cities, I'm sure, don't give anything, so it's a, it's got to be a variety, I would guess.
So I would say we want to tackle the full-time tonight, and we'll tackle the part-time. This is just the beginning of many other parts of this employee manual that's got to be rewritten. It's, if you've had a chance to read it, and I have over the years, it's, there's a lot of things that were put in years ago that don't necessarily apply today, and when I had a meeting with the chief and with Chris, it was very evident, especially with the two new hires that we've just brought on, that, you know, these are the small things that are keeping us from getting the talent, we've got to quickly write them and address them, and that's what we're doing tonight for the part-time, for the full-time excuse.
I think it'd be a big deal for her hiring.
Especially if officers, you know.
Right.
And this will be retroactive to those other officers we just hired, right? That isn't just for new hires?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
It would be, again, unless I get a direct, different direction from the council, it would be starting effective right now.
Yeah, for all employees.
Right, so, so basically, they would accrue twice as much per paycheck. You were talking about paycheck accruals. They accrue for all those employees who are zero to two years, once this is approved, would accrue twice as much per paycheck going forward.
And, and will go back, back on them? I mean, go, I mean, from the time they started?
Well, they're, they're already inside the two-year window, they'll qualify for it immediately.
Okay, yeah, you're right, okay, sorry.
And then Paycom handles all the accruals, so it's real easy from a bookkeeping perspective. Other questions? Any other further discussion, counsel? Is there a motion, and what I would ask in the motion is that whoever does the motion amends the item to include it as full-time?
Yep.
And then we'll bring a part-time back.
I move to approve the amendment to section five point two of the employee handbook for vacation leave to increase earned vacation for employees with zero to two years of service, but full-time employees with zero to two years of service to eighty hours per year, and also identify the town administrator to update and maintain all vacation hours earned.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
No, we just wanted to make sure, because I, I had to type one.
Oh, I know, I said eighty hours. I, I said that eighty hours instead of the forty hours. Yeah.
Zero to five years.
Oh, zero to five years.
Yes.
Okay, I said zero to two. Let me, let me start again.
Yeah, that was my-
Scratch, scratch, scratch the others. I move to amend section five point two of the employee handbook for vacation leave to be increased, or earned, to increase earned vacation for full-time employees with zero to five years of service to eighty hours per year, and also identify the town administrator to update and maintain all vacation hours earned.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Very good. All right, we have a motion by Councilperson Robertson, and a second by Councilperson Faverro. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Gwartney?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
All right, thank you, counsel. Item passes, so chief, please communicate with the officers that the council did their job tonight.
We do our job all the time.
Moving on to item fifteen, discuss, consider, and act on approving the development of a new website for the town in the amount of not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars. We have a citizen who signed up to speak tonight, Jean Hillier. If you could please come up to the podium.
Jean Hillier, one seventy, Trailing Oaks Drive. I'm kind of taking from some of the early remarks that maybe some of these questions have been answered, but for the rest of us who just read the agenda, may not be entirely obvious, so a couple of things. First of all, I'm not adverse to change, and, nor am I adverse to fiscally responsible spending, but I have some things that kind of came to mind, so pardon me if they're not obvious, but maybe it'll come out in the discussion afterwards. Typically, even for like inexpensive things, we try and get mobile bids. It's not obvious in there whether or not that was attempted. I didn't see anything from the references provided from this proposal that this person has done any website design for municipalities. The references that I saw were pretty simplistic on a comparative basis in terms of content and layout. I didn't see anything about a warranty or guarantee for the proposed work. Typically, somebody has to sign off on that after they test-drive it, and it's all working appropriately before final payment's made, so I don't know if it's like fifty percent upfront and fifty percent at the end, or what the deal is. Also interested about ongoing maintenance, there was mentioned in the contract about an ongoing annual maintenance fee from Civic Plus. Typically, websites are not static, so, you know, operating systems change and other things, software changes, there's upgrades to be done, things to be added, that kind of thing, so I'm wondering if that's a separate contract, and if anything's been, any inquiries been made about that cost, because once they got you hooked, you really kind of are, like, you have to sort of pay whatever they demand. ADA compliance was mentioned, and just for enlightenment, the Bonsido software that Civic Plus has, it, when, when the app is run, it only identifies items that are not compliant. It's up to whoever the customer is to actually fix those items. So even though the website will be designed according to this as ADA compliant, who's going to make, make sure that it remains ADA compliant? For example, any item that's added to that has to be ADA compliant also, so question about that. I didn't see any mention of connectivity to external websites, including our YouTube channel, Ecode three sixty, where our town ordinances, resolutions, minutes, budgets, and agendas are posted. And then one other thing is, who ultimately signs off on this, and is there going to be like a beta test period where people can go, you know, side-by-side and make sure that everything's there? So again, it would just be helpful to have some enlightenment. Thank you.
Thank you. So Chris, I've got you on here as the presenter.
No problem.
So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, I'm very excited to bring this to the council. The update on our website is something that I've wanted to look at ever since I started. As most of you know, our website is, at least from a look and from a feel, and trust me, from a backend perspective, is very cumbersome to, to utilize. Civic Plus is, from, from my experience in talking to other jurisdictions, they kind of have the, the, the gambit on municipality websites. That's good, but that could also be bad, because on the other side, they are also very, very expensive. I've taught, I've had, already had a couple of local jurisdictions ask, what are you guys using? Because right now, Civic Plus is updating all their backend software and updating everything, and they are jacking up their prices pretty substantially. And so a lot of the other jurisdictions are taking a look at what, what are we doing? Because especially as a small town, we, we don't have the resources as some of the larger towns do. So as a result, we did get a presentation from Civic Plus on what their upgrade is, along with a, a cost estimate. I thought it was excessive, so that's why Wedding got another bid from this, from this person who has done multiple websites. He has not done a municipal website, but what's important to me is the software that he's using. He's utilizing Squarespace, which is used by multiple large jurisdictions. It's a well-known, secure program to develop websites, and it's also very, very easy from an end-user perspective for us to post things. The Civic Plus website is very, very tedious. As Mark had mentioned earlier, we did have a demo done by this individual, where Mark and myself and Lynn set in on it. He went over it from, basically from start to finish, as it relates to our existing programs like Ecode three sixty and our permitting. Basically, all those are just links anyway. It's just a simple link that he just attaches to it. But then I, so we will still have all the functionality that the residents are used to with our existing website, but it'll just be run on a better platform, and with a much easier backend use for staff, and also from a support perspective. He is a graph, he's an independent graphic artist who wants to get his foot in the door with, with us. He has promised us to get us the, the service that we need, any follow-up that we need, he will be there. I have, I've had multiple conversations with him. I'm confident that he is not going to bail on us at all. He's just not that kind of person. So personally, I, I think it's a great deal. I mean, from a cost perspective, he's charging us thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Currently, Civic Plus, just to upgrade, their basic system was four thousand, and trust me, that was just a very, very basic system. When we asked, well, what's the next level, they were talking ten thousand dollars, or up to ten thousand dollars for their nice website. Additionally, they, on top of that, they do charge a annual operating fee currently, or, I'm sorry, annual maintenance fee of currently, we're paying like two thousand a year for that. So Civic Plus is very expensive, and I believe their primary target are the medium to large cities, because as a website, those are a lot more complex than, than, than what we have. As it relates to the ADA, we had multiple conversations with him. All the required ADA is incorporated in the Squarespace software, so it's not like we have to, to worry about that. We will be totally compliant with the ADA requirements, not through what he's doing, it's, it's based on the software that he used to build the, to, to build the, the project. So again, like Mark said, it was a pretty impressive website. He is actually, what I liked about him is instead of, instead of him just showing us an old website that he built, he actually has already built half of our website, so we actually saw what our website was going to look like. To me, I like that, that just shows initiative, and he, he's going to take it seriously. The nice part about it, it's very easy to make it more aesthetically pleasing and nicer from a webpage perspective. Anything we need to do to adjust all that stuff is very, very easy to do. He will work with us on that, and so I'm very, very comfortable with this, with this gentleman providing us a quality project.
A quick question. The, the Squarespace annual fee, like the maintenance that we do, that typically includes the, the platform upgrades and maintenance?
This fee is just for him.
Oh, no, I meant the, the, you said the square, annual Squarespace subscription is only two hundred and seventy-six.
It's only a few hundred dollars.
But it's that they maintain their backend upgrades, right?
Exactly, that's for them to maintain.
Yeah, so we wouldn't need him as an ongoing maintenance? So it wouldn't be, or are we-
No, it would be two to three hundred dollars a year for the Squarespace support.
Yeah, okay.
And he's going to be teaching you how to update and load things?
Yeah, he's already showed us how, and quite honestly, it's drag-and-drop. It's very, very, very simple, and he will be making sure that all of our links to our existing programs that we have, such as our permitting, such as our Ecode three sixty, the, the links to our council meetings and all those, make sure that those are, those are working properly. Again, in that, in that world, those links are pretty simple to do. It's just, it's just hooking it into a link and press the button, and it'll take you right there.
When does our contract expire with Civic Plus?
Civic, it actually expires at the end of the year, but I, I was trying to find the, the contract to give me an out, and I will make sure that we, if I can't get an out, I would delay this until we do it, so there's no overlap, so I'm not paying twice for something.
Okay.
But I'm sure I can get an out on, on that contract.
Okay.
So Pat, it's so simple that even a mayor can do it?
Yeah, so simple, even a mayor can do it.
That's amazing. So my only other question with you was, I've gotten a lot of complaints about our current calendaring system within our thing, because it only shows you whatever page you're on, the things that are related to that page, so people could never find our meetings or when events were going on, and I was always told, well, you have to go to that page. Well, how do you know that? Is it going to have one calendar with everything, so people can actually see what's going on in the town?
Yes, in fact, he showed us that during his demo, and different options you can do from a calendaring perspective. In fact, and so like if you add something on one page, too, it'll automatically go right to the calendar as well.
Very nice.
So it'll be much more user-friendly, and both on the backend and the frontend, to make sure that it's easy for the residents, as what the residents are looking at, it'll be easy for them to, to get around, plus it'll be easy for us staff to put the information in. You have any other comments?
Yeah, he's got some, what I thought was really good, and I was going to recommend it, but he already had it, where at the top of the page, there's like hot links, there's like six or seven, I guess, on there for things that he thought would be used often, and so, and you can change those, because I'm pretty sure, he's saying, so, or you can add to them, take some away, that, you know, if, I'm sure, you know, one of them might be burn status or something like that, or you can click on there, and it'd just go instantly there, instead of having to go to a couple of different links, like the current one, or, I don't see why anybody would want to see our minutes or anything like that. It hadn't yet to be a quick link, but, you know, that was an example, you know, you could just click that, or, you know, contacts or anything like that, so you have a hot link that instantly goes to some of those pages where you don't have to search for them, of ones that he suspected that it was heavily used.
And then also, from an implementation perspective, much like, like Jean had mentioned, that the plan is for him to put it together, then periodically bring it to us for review, and that'll be reviewed by myself and, and Mark and Ed Lynn to make sure that it's, it's moving smoothly and that nothing's been forgotten, and that it's being done, done appropriately. So there'll be oversight throughout the process as he, as he builds it. And if there's anything from a council perspective that you would like to see in it, please let me know, because we're, we're, this is our chance to, to kind of spruce up our website a little bit and make it more useful and everything, so I'm excited about this project.
So I'm going to go ahead and mention the one thing that I also asked about was, some of the towns are now putting up a message board just for council, and so that council can stay out of the quorum game of problems with talking with each other, but they could post things up there that they would like to have on an agenda in the future, and, and it's available for the whole town to see. And so towns like Austin, Texas are using that now, because it is allowed under Texas statutes, that we can do that. It's not someplace where citizens would be able to post, it would just be council members and the mayor and staff that would be able to post notices out there, but it'd be a place people could go and see what we were talking about. So things like the meeting at Eden Ranch, instead of me throwing something out on Facebook for people to see, I'd be able to put a notice up there, and then the rest, the council members could see it as well.
Chris, how did you find this guy, or how did you vet him, and basically, yeah, what other people did you look for?
It was actually word of mouth. It was actually word of mouth, quite honestly.
Okay.
He, he is the brother of one of our new officers, and he just kind of mentioned, hey, my brother does this, and I go, well? Let me see what he's got, without, without knowing. And, um, upon talking with him, he's highly professional, he's very, very responsive. I like the fact that, again, he, when he showed me what the site was going to look like, he had done his homework. He had, he didn't just show me an old website that he had done before, hey, take, no, he actually did the homework, checked out our website, said, hey, this is, this is what it is, this is how it can be improved, and our, the demo was basically looking at our website. So, I was very impressed with him, but I initially got his name through a referral from an employee.
Okay.
We'd ask Joanne if you'd like to come up, please.
No, I never mess with this thing. Joanne Meyer, one seventy, Park Lane. What about the ordinances section? Because, like I was talking to a neighbor the other day, and we were arguing about something, and I said, no, I think it's an ordinance. So, is it clearer? Because I have gone in there to look at things a long time ago, and we had a big discussion, and I, I couldn't figure it out. Thank you.
You want to handle that one?
Sure, yeah, be, all the, all the ordinances will be on there like they are now, and one of my goals with this website too, is as we develop it, are, if there are areas that are cumbersome or things like that to manipulate through, let's get those cleaned up while we're building a new site. So, yes, everything that is on our website now will be available on the new website, with, uh, the goal of making them all bigger and better.
And the ordinances are in the Ecode three sixty, so that's not going away. So, it'll just be a link in the website.
And one of the things I've given you in the past is the resolutions, and all of that type of thing, because they're very hard to look through right now with the way they are by year, and you can't know by subject. So, I went through and gave a list of subjects that they could be under, and so hopefully that will be cleared up, because I've gotten a lot of citizens that have called me and said, I think there's a resolution on this, but I can't find it anywhere, and then I've searched through to find them finally. So, that'd be another upgrade, I think, for the citizens.
So, I took some notes, um, when Citizen Hillier was talking, um, I think we touched on a bunch of them, but warranty guarantee. Was that brought up?
It, it wasn't part of our discussion, I can make sure that that's included in the, that he will provide us with the, with the warranty and, and a level of service guarantee.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? Do you have enough information, do you feel, to move forward on, act on this this evening? Okay, is there a motion then?
Waiting.
I move to approve the development of a new website for the town not to exceed three thousand five hundred.
Is there a second?
My second.
She got it, Janet got it, Janet seconded it. I second Janet's second.
Then you thirded it.
That'd be a third.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Dietrich, and we have a second by Councilperson Robertson. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
And Dr. K?
Aye.
All right, the item passes, so here's what I'm going to ask Chris to do. As part of our Friday update, um, moving forward, we will give an update on how we're progressing with the website as well. We'll just put that, that'll be, we'll, we'll put it at the top of the update to start, and then it'll drop into the section that is always there until we get the new website up. Second to that is, to do a town update on a Friday with the current system, it shouldn't take an hour and a half to two hours. And that's what happens with Friday update. So, sometimes when the Friday update doesn't come out, it's not because we're lazy, it's because there's a challenge with the system sometimes. And so, um, this will be a, a much improved, um, vehicle for that to happen, as well as, really, we, we don't do social media with the town hardly at all here. And this will be a predecessor to us now taking a more proactive way of doing social media in the future. The other towns are doing it, we're not, we're kind of stuck in the, in the nineties right now. And, and so that is another part that will come after this in regards to our social media and, and how we're moving forward. And we've already, uh, uh, working on a, a cross-functional team that are going to consist of some of our officers, with our town administration, with our council, and mayors and such, as we move forward on, on our social media presence. So, uh, super excited about that. So, counsel, thank you for, for taking this step on this particular item, um, because I think that, it'll be bumpy at the beginning as we get through it, but we'll work, it's going to be very, very professional, so. With that said, we are at seven fifty this evening, and we are going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dave.